Vocation first, I don't see Pastor Jackson, but Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco leaves and then invocation followed by the likes of by Mr. Dan Rebe. Thank you.
If everybody could please stand and bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the wonderful gifts you've given us here of life, our family, our friends. We thank you for all the support that you've given us here in our community. Please bless all those that are fighting for our country to keep us safe here. Our firefighters, our police officers, also our elected officials, give them the wisdom to make the right choices here in our community for all of our families.
Thank you, amen. At this point, Mr. Dan Rebe, you can leave us former council member city of Temple City and also works with the San Gabriel Valley District. Alrighty. Place your right hand over your heart, please. Thank you.
Our flag is striking color, pledge is courage, and faith. To these let us add our sincere pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Rebe. I want to thank all the individuals that are here this evening. At this point, council members have any recognitions they wish to share with us? Please do so, but before I go on there, just want to go ahead and open the Finance and the Housing Authority and I'll read off something that were required by state law, which is a has recapping him with the city council this evening and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority. So at this point, we'll get back to Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
Mayor, as you know, last week, our sister city, Toscogurero, came here and visited our city for about a week and then on Sunday evening, they we had a reception and about 30 members of the congregation that came from Toscogurero came and met with a number of city residents and we had a reception here in our ARC Center. It was very, very well put together. It had music and there was Waste Management had sponsored the dinner and there was some dance and it was just a very nice time that we spent there with them and shared to them. From there, they went to San Francisco and I think Sacramento and if I'm correct, they met with our Assembly Member Roger Hernandez. Is that true or did they meet with their? Did they meet with the Assembly Member? Yeah, they did, okay. And so on Sunday, they presented each council member with a momentum and so they presented one to the mayor. Let me read it for you. It's this beautiful silver platter here that is engraved in Spanish. It says, "Se le otroga el presidente al mayor Manuel Lozano de Ciudades Hermanos Toscogurero Baldwin Park, el presidente Maria de la Luz Navarro Justos, June 11, 2014." I don't know what that means in English, but translated, no, I'm just kidding. So I want to present this to the mayor. This is what they presented to you so we could get a picture and I'll officially present it.
We'll place this up at over, I guess, with the community center.
Also, Mayor, I'm sorry, for they also gave momentum to the council members for Cruz Baca, this beautiful silver cigarette box for the fentanyl smoker. For Monica Garcia, it's a beautiful platinum lighter holder.
Campfire, campfire.
For Susan Rubio, this beautiful platinum key holder.
Okay.
Keychain. And I also got one of these, so.
Alrighty.
I will bring these to you.
In order to understand why silver, they're the silver capital of the world, from what I understand, that's where they make all the silver and so that's why everything's silver.
I want to, first of all, thank the Sister Cities. I was unable to make it with them as, you know, I was out celebrating my dad's 90th birthday in Bronzeville, Texas, where I was originally born as well. And I'll tell you, it's nice to be back in California, even though I was there for three days. It was 90 degrees during the daytime, went 91 humidity. At nighttime, it dropped down to a nice 88 degrees and it was pretty, pretty hot. It was, it was okay, but it was nice to go back there and visit a lot of family members back in Bronzeville, Texas. So alrighty, so at this point, I have one more item real quick here. Alright, council members, Susan Rubio, were you going to share something?
Just as council member Pacheco stated, we wanted to thank Sister Cities. They came and they were very generous in their gifts and they always welcome us into their town and they do these massive festivities for us and so they're always very gracious. I just want to thank them for everything that they do and for coming over to Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Mayor, how about that Chile, Spain versus Chile game? Did you guys see that one?
Yes.
It was good, huh? Chile won, 2-0. I thought the Spaniards could have fought harder, but the Chileans took the game. They didn't try as hard, but they did a good job anyway, so. So congratulations to all the Chileans and their, and their country's team.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco. Alright, so at this point, we're going to go on the first presentation that we have, which is the.
May I take roll call, please?
Oh, that's right. Madam City Clerk and Madam City Treasurer. Gracias.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruz Baca. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pacheco.
Pleasure.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Here. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk Maria Contreras. Yes, someone say something to the right? Nope, okay. Alright, so at this point, the first presentation that we have is the check presentation by the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District for Barnes Park Improvement. So, oh, President Reyes will be presenting that. Brian, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, I'm Brian Odeas, Director of the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. I represent Division Five, which represents the great city of Baldwin Park and I'm happy to be here tonight to be able to commemorate a great partnership that we've had, Upper District, City of Baldwin Park, and also San Gabriel Valley Water Company. And I'm happy to be able to be here today to present a check for $100,000.
Wow.
For the Baldwin, for the Barnes Park Splash Pad retrofit project. Upon completion, the Splash Pad retrofit project will assist the city in reducing water consumption and save approximately 25,000 gallons of water daily. And it also equates that the city will be saving up to $8,000 per year in water-related costs. Especially in a time of drought, the governor's declaration of drought, it's projects like these are really going to make a difference and I'm happy to be able to partner with the city to be able to be an example to the community and show that Baldwin Park is taking the lead to be able to conserve water and to be able to fight the drought together. So with that, I want to ask you all to come forward and I have a big check to present.
Come on up here.
Mayor, as Brian makes his way up, I also want to acknowledge him and the Upper District for providing some funding for the Walnut Creek revitalization, which is underway. We are in the process of hiring, we're in the process of, we're in the RFP process, trying to get a contractor to help us with the design. And thanks to Brian, they provided some seed money for that. So this is just one of many great projects that he's partnered with us on behalf of Upper District, so definitely want to say thank you.
$100,000.
This is the real thing.
This is the real thing.
Oh, Marie has a real check.
This is the real thing.
Whoa.
Can I hold it for you? No, I'm just kidding.
Camera three, this camera right here, one, two, and hold it. One more, last one.
Hold camera.
Want to get one for social media?
Can I film?
Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
$100,000.
Thank you, sir.
Manny, can I take one more picture with the water guy?
I always enjoy hearing you say the pledge of allegiance, always.
David, do you want to share some words? Do you want to say some words?
One more picture, get it, Sabrina.
Dan, Dan, you want to say some words? Go ahead, go ahead. You've got the mic right there in front of you.
I'm loud. San Gabriel Valley Water Company is pleased to partner with Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District and the City of Baldwin Park to do the retrofits at Barnes Park. Again, as was said, we are in a drought. The governor has asked for a 20% reduction. We all have to do our part to reduce our use of water and Baldwin Park is leading the challenge to reduce its water consumption. We would ask that all of you at least shower at least once a month to try and conserve water.
That too. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
I want you to come here and talk to me, right?
At least.
Can we take a picture?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's Carrillo? Hey, where's Carrillo?
I never have this.
No one?
Yes.
I never have this.
I don't have that on the table.
That's nice. You know what? Here, yeah, my small table. Come on. I'm going to pop that back of the web.
Brian and I?
Alright, thank you very much.
Yeah, I did take a picture.
Okay.
You barely see this. It's very nice.
I was going to say, really? We'll pin it up. Alrighty, thank you very much. We do have one more presentation. Oh, Terry Muse is here. Okay. So this is the plaque, recognition to Fernando Prado for his retirement from Waste Management. How many years, Terry?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Where is he at? I met him before, yes. Buenas.
And actually, Mayor, Cheryl Lotman, our district manager, would like to read a bio one.
I can't, I could barely hear you.
Sit on.
Hello?
Share a bio with him.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for inviting Waste Management to speak with you tonight about our commercial route manager Fernando Prado, who's retiring after 43 years worth of service to not only Waste Management, but to the city of Baldwin Park. I'd like to give you a little bit of background about Fernando. He came to the United States from Mexico in 1967 and upon arriving, he found work in the Union Bakery, where he helped the bakers. He later worked picking apples in North San Francisco.
Wow.
In 1969, Fernando married Maria Elena and one day, Prado saw his neighbor leaving for work at what was called then Griffith Disposal. It was owned by the Otting family. So Fernando followed his neighbor to work at Franciscito and Orange in West Covina. He walked in, he asked for work and he was hired. No background checks, no waiting period, no application, just hired.
Wow.
Fernando worked as a residential helper. They actually hand tossed the routes back in those days and got his commercial license a few months later. At that time, there was only one commercial route being serviced in the entire San Gabriel Valley. In 1970, Prado began servicing commercial customers in the San Gabriel Valley and the Baldwin Park area. One day, Prado was asked if he'd like to become a foreman. Of course, he turned it down. It was less money than he was making as a driver. They pursued him, though, and he became a route manager and really the rest is history. In February of 1973, Griffith Disposal moved from their old building in West Covina to our current location at Stewart and Live Oak, where we've been for the past 41 years. In the early 80s, SCI Services sold their business to Waste Management. During this time, Prado worked as a manager in El Monte four days a week and in Baldwin Park one day a week. Later, he became the manager for the Diamond Bar area in Walnut as well. As our business grew, Prado began managing strictly the commercial line of business. With his usual style and because he handled it with such ease, we gave him more business. We gave him the entire commercial line of business to manage and in 2011, we incorporated the industrial business as well. Prado's just done an outstanding job and we can't say enough wonderful things about him. He looks forward to continuing work with us as a part-time basis and spending time with his family. Wife Maria, daughters Gloria, Christina, Maria, and son Fernando Jr. And Prado also enjoys spending time with his grandchildren, Gabrielle, Tatiana, and Anthony, all of whom are with us here tonight. So thank you very much for honoring Prado on our behalf.
Well, first of all, I just want to recognize and thanks Waste Management as a part of the community and Mr. Fernando Prado as well. Forty-three years is an amazing task for someone to be in a business, being, working with a company, obviously, that has grown immensely, Fortune 500 Corporation. And I know that we, you were part of a group that we were together maybe about four or five years ago and I think then we made a portion of his family. So it gives me great honor to have you here, to be recognized for the longevity that you have spent with Waste Management and of course, you, from there, you built your family and yet, you know, you look like you're too young to retire, so I'm certain you have other, other plans, as they were saying, part-time. So I want to thank you and wish you the best as you enter a whole new life and opportunity with your wife and with your family. So on that note, why don't I ask you to come up here and ask your wife, and those of you who want to take pictures, you could come up here as well, so your family members. So come on up here, Mr. Fernando.
Should his family come?
Yeah, let's bring the whole family up here. I think we'll all fit. I'm taking Monica's seat. Well, you know what? Terry, you guys come up here, take pictures.
Okay.
As a C.
Felicidades.
De qué parte de la República mi gente?
Michoacán, pa' no conocer más de Monterrey.
Felicidades.
Oh, Carrillo's here. Okay.
Take a picture with her camera, please. Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Yes. You go services? Oh, really?
I go to service.
Nice, buddy. Okay. So let me read what it says for Fernando. "In recognition of your outstanding 43 years of service and dedication to your employers, colleagues, and residents of Baldwin Park, the city council thanks you for your commitment and wishes you a happy retirement." So give this to him. Of course, 43 years, which obviously says a lot and it is a legacy for all the family members that are here. Work hard and do good and good things will happen to you in life. So on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park, I want to present him the plaque and the symbol that represents the city. Gracias por todo. Apoyos.
First of all, I want to thank all the city, all the members. I want to thank Waste Management for the opportunity they gave me to grow up and it's been a pleasure to work with this company and the city. When I started way back in 73, I mean, 71, it never came to my mind that I'm going to stay all those years. But as I said, it's been a pleasure and thank you very much. You and Cheryl.
Well, what we'll do tomorrow, so that, make sure you tell all the Waste Management employees, we're going to place his name up on the marquee, right there, so that everyone sees it there and about his retirement and the amount of years that he's been part of Baldwin Park. And also Manny, we could feature, feature his picture in the now, so that all the residents of Baldwin Park, all 75,000 residents are able to see that as well. Gracias, thank you. Thank you. You know what we do? Actually, let's get our picture first and then we'll have one separate. One more photo. Manny, move, vamos. Where's the plaque?
A little bit tighter, please. Okay. Very good. Now, three, one, two, and hold it. Look over here, please. Another camera. Three, one, two. One more? Alright, is that it?
Social media.
Okay, oh, sorry about that. Go ahead. Alrighty, okay, thank you. Gracias.
Thank you, guys. Oh, you know what? They're going to get, you want to do that here outside by the emblem? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, guys. Take care, guys. Thank you.
Thirty-nine years old?
Gracias.
Like some work at the very stuck to their job. I'm meeting you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, the family. Alright, at this point, I don't have any further presentations and we'll go, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. You have approximately three minutes. Terry Muse, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. May I?
Yes.
And community. I'd like to introduce to you the 2014 Waste Management Scholarship recipients and the internship recipient. We are so honored to present them to you. Come on up. They've actually written their own introductions, which is part of a learning process for them. They're young. Come on up here.
Thank you.
Desiree Lopez earned a $500 scholarship, I'm sorry, Flores, earned a $500 scholarship. Ronnie Garcia, $2,000 scholarship and Catherine Ramirez is our intern who's working for us at Waste Management.
Oh, great. Fantastic.
Let them tell you about themselves.
Hi. Hello, my name is Desiree Flores and I am a 2014 graduate and to tell you a little bit about myself, I became a parent at the age of 16 and many told me that my future would be very dim and that, you know, I need to get a job right after high school and stuff. But that only encouraged me to continue high school and graduate and to go to college to make sure that the future of me and my son would be bright. So to inform you, I will be starting Mount Sac Antonio College this upcoming Monday. It's my first day and I will be majoring in radiology to become an x-ray technician. I will be using the money that I'm very thankful to have received to help pay all unpaid fees for my college and, sorry, it's my first day. I'm fairly new to the city. I came last year and I was very grateful for the opportunities that Baldwin Park City had for me. I went to North Park and there they, the staff was very generous and guided me in the right path. I started school at North Park with a GPA lower than a 2.0 and graduated with straight A's throughout the whole year.
Great.
The Cal State program provided at North Park gave me the opportunity to continue school while taking my son Isaiah there and I'm also grateful for the early Head Start Program that the city provides and for that I am thankful. Without the opportunities that was given here at Baldwin Park, I don't think I would be the person or even the student and mostly the parent that I have become today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ronnie Garcia. I was raised in Baldwin Park. If Kaiser was built in 1996, I would have probably been born in Baldwin Park as well. Since a young age, I fell in love with the city. I've seen me around, I'm all over the place, Morgan Park, helping with the teen center. I'm probably Baldwin Park, like in the middle, I don't know, name would probably be Baldwin Park. I'm alumni from Hargreaves Elementary, Jerry D. Holland, as well as a recent graduate from Baldwin Park High School, Cole Braves. Yay, sorry, SB.
What high school did you say?
Baldwin Park High School. Thank you for coming, Mr. Lozano, for coming to our avid class. That was really, that inspired a lot of kids, so I would like to thank you for that.
With Mr. Isra.
Calderon.
A good professor.
Would like to thank a lot of council members I've noticed here. I've seen you guys all over the place. I've seen Cruz Baca with St. John's all the time. I would like to thank you very much. I would like to thank Waste Management for providing this amazing scholarship that will help me in my college journey because last year, my dad unfortunately was unemployed for a year, so this scholarship is going to help me in my academic endeavor. I would also like to thank Mr. Pembol. He was an amazing person. I've helped him at the museum and he just, wow, I didn't know Baldwin Park had so much history, but he knows all of it.
Thanks, Bob.
And this, this upcoming fall, I will be attending UCLA, Bo Bruins, sorry, USC.
Where's Marlene Garcia?
I'm planning on majoring in microbiology and hopefully in the future, I could be a surgeon as well as in Kaiser Baldwin Park. So I would like to return to my community once I'm a surgeon and inspire other kids to also pursue medical careers and other careers. This scholarship will help me big time in the future because it will pay directly to my tuition and room and board and any money that's left over, I'm planning on putting it into a savings bond for medical school because that is not cheap. And thank you again, Waste Management, for this amazing opportunity and you have no idea how grateful I am. Thank you so much.
And I'm certain, I'm certain you'll be very successful, you're a really good speaker. Just to let you know, BP High, the two colleagues of mine to the far right here, they graduated back in the 20th century from Baldwin Park High School, you know? I won't mention that. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Ramirez. I am 18 years old and I have been a resident of Baldwin Park for 11 years. When I turned 15, I decided to help out this community by volunteering at the Art and Recreation Center and the Think Together Program at Jones Junior High and Central Elementary School. This year, I was determined to be involved in some type of activity at Baldwin Park. To my luck, Waste Management and the city council opened up a big opportunity for me. Together, like a community, they created an internship that will help me build up traits that I will need for the future. Public speaking and organizations are some examples. To this, I would like to thank both the city council and Waste Management for giving us the youth a chance to become a part of this great city. My expectation for this internship would be that once I finish my time at Waste Management and continue my education at the University of California Riverside, I would be a well-rounded person. In other words, my qualities will be expanded so that I will graduate UC Riverside and come back to this playful city and do something great in return for this great opportunity given to me. Again, I would like to thank the city council and Waste Management for making me both a representative of Baldwin Park and Waste Management.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge, you know, Waste Management. I know that earlier on, you asked what we value and we always appreciate our partners that really put a lot of effort into education in our community. So thank you for the internship program and these scholarships that you offer, that's always valued. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, sir.
Good evening. Ken Woods, business owner and resident. I'm going to tell you a real trashy tale. Earlier this year, I received a letter from Waste Management stating that because of the service they have provided me for the past 17 years, that put me, I was not in that I will need for the future. Public speaking and organizations are some examples. To this, I would like to thank both the City Council and Waste Management for giving us the youth a chance to become a part of this great city. My expectation for this internship would be that once I finish my time at Waste Management and continue my education at the University of California Riverside, I would be a well-rounded person. In other words, my qualities will be expanded so that I will graduate UC Riverside and come back to this playful city and do something great in return for this great opportunity given to me. Again, I would like to thank the City Council and Waste Management for making me both a representative of Baldwin Park and Waste Management.
Thank you.
Mayor, while he's coming up, can I say something really quickly? I just want to acknowledge, you know, Waste Management. I know that earlier on you asked what we value and we always appreciate our partners that really put a lot of effort into education in our community, so thank you for the internship program and these scholarships that you offer, that's always valued. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, sir.
Good evening. Ken Woods, business owner and resident. I'm gonna tell you a real trashy tale. Earlier this year, I received a letter from Waste Management stating that because of the service they have provided me for the past 17 years, that put me, I was not in compliance with state law. And I had 10 days to make newer arrangements or I would be billed 56 bucks a week for trash service, which would be $2,912 a year instead of the $318 I paid the year before. I contacted Terry Muse and we worked out a little deal. She stated that Baldwin Park's ordinance would allow bi-weekly or a bi-monthly trash pickup. That was the hangup, that we couldn't have a bi-monthly pickup. So now my trash is picked up twice per month at a cost of $1,159 per year, which is 365% more than I was paying the year before. I don't think my trash rate should be raised. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, move along with the public communication. Bob Bimble, welcome. Thank you, our historian.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Always happy to be here with all of our friends and leaders in our community. Tonight, I'm here, first of all, to say it's so great to see these kids receive these types of rewards and know that they're gonna represent us so well out in the world. Secondly, I want to remind everybody that it's our annual time for the July the 15th, 6:00 to 8:30 PM fundraiser to help support the museum. We know that you are all very much in, in good graces with, with all of the things in the museum. We know that we have people in our community that visit us on a daily basis, but this year, we're going to have a special barbecue chicken in all of the works. We're gonna have an entertainment group that will be there. We'll have our usual fun, our usual auction, which they will be auctioning antiques and white elephants, et cetera, for people to take home. It's a fun time. The food is great and it will be in the art building and we would certainly welcome everybody there. We have put back at the back flyers to announce it. Remember, this museum has the history of Baldwin Park.
Sure does.
And almost every week, someone comes in with some new piece of history of Baldwin Park. I've just received information from the Dials Club that had, was big here in Baldwin Park a few years ago. And now we have more on the western band and show that was on the edge of Baldwin Park. So we're constantly finding things and I want to thank all of you for your support and all of you are welcome to come. It is free. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you very much, sir. That's from 6 o'clock, right? Thank you, appreciate that. All right, move along with public communication.
Thomas Carey, the former resident of Baldwin Park. I had an unpleasant tree this morning, I shouldn't even be here probably, but a friend of mine, his kitty got sick and he had to euthanize, put to sleep, not a pleasant thing. But, you know, we do this for our animals, but we don't do it for our people. We let our, some people let their relatives linger there day after day after day. You need to let go. They're suffering, just like the animal was suffering this morning with fluid and couldn't breathe and things like that. So we did what had to be done. We should do this for our people. It's a shame that people have to get attorneys and get everything in writing, but that's the way it is if you don't want us to lay there and be kept alive unnecessarily. If a person is gone here, let them go. That wife of Casey Kasem, that's a shining example. She was determined to keep him here. His mind was gone, there was, there was no reason to keep him here, prolonging the suffering. People need to let go and stop being so damn selfish because that's what it is. I know this is an uncomfortable subject, it's not an easy thing to speak about, maybe I sound a little harsh, but maybe that's what gets through, through people's minds when a relative is laying there and they're, you know, they're, that's what they would want. Think about what they would want. They don't want to be there connected to all these things, keeping them alive, whether their mind is active or not, because people don't want to let go. Do the humane thing and allow, allow the person to pass away and show them out with some dignity rather than keeping him, him or her or even the child that's suffering. There's, there's no reason for that. It's inconsideration. You know, it's, and we, we put our animals to sleep, we allow them, we show them out, we stay with them when they go. Why don't you do the same for your relatives? I kind of don't understand why. I pretty much, I was gonna talk about other things, but I don't feel like going there. It's gonna, quite a contrast from the last time I was here. I was flying high. No, I wasn't high on anything. I guess it's because the dentist got at me and I didn't take any anesthesia and, you know, was really, no, I allowed him to, you know, do whatever, you know, in there without them putting anything in my mouth and I guess it keyed me up for some reason, I don't know. I wish I had a little bit more of that today after what happened this morning, but.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you, Thomas. Appreciate that, buddy. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Art Luna, Arturo, excuse me. Congratulations, all you young folks. Waste Management sent a very bad message to the city of residents of Baldwin Park. Resolution number nine and 10, one of them's for seven years, the other was for eight years. You people just can't get the message. I tell you, we need revenue so we can do all this without raising taxes, without raising prices. This gentleman that owns this business, you're gonna raise his money, you're gonna raise his garbage, trash, like if it's, oh, he's got money coming out of his ears. What's the matter with us? I should say, you folks and Waste Management, they don't deserve to be credited for anything. They just handed you a bunch of money not very long ago. We're gonna pay for that. They didn't give you nothing. Us residents are gonna pay for that. You people can't see that? What's the matter with you folks up here? All of you? You think that's free? They gave you $100,000 right now, water. They're gonna raise our water. Who's paying for that? 75,000 people in Baldwin Park, including you folks that live in Baldwin Park. And that is good? No, it isn't. I keep saying we need revenue from corporations. What do you do? You raise our trash, you raise our water, and you'll continue doing that all along. Pretty soon, when this town is empty and all the businesses go elsewhere, I guess you folks will feel pretty good. Keeping these people here benefits all of us, not me, not you, or any of you, the whole city. So let's keep these businesses here. Raising this gentleman's trash, that means you're gonna raise mine. What did I tell you guys at the beginning, four years ago or three and a half years ago? We need revenue. You guys look at me like, what the hell is he talking about? I've yet to see a big corporation, a big business come into this city. Have you guys tried to bring one? Tell me how many we have. I could show you building after building that's empty. We lost Kentucky Fried Chicken, everybody goes to El Monte. West Covina, Covina. What are we doing? Chasing everybody out of Baldwin Park? It seems that way. You go down Main Street, big empty buildings, we'll raise your trash, we'll raise your water, and we continue doing it. No matter how many times we discuss this as a public presenting to you folks, it doesn't bother anybody. These scholarships, these kids are good, are great, we're all gonna pay for it. What did Waste Management do? Raised the darn trash. And the first part about it, they wanted it to be immediately, not reviewed by the city officials or the city.
All right, thank you. Oh, sorry about that. Thank you, city treasurer. Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Three minutes, I want five minutes.
I hear you, Mr. Luna. My name's Julian Casas, Ballpark resident. I'm sure you guys are familiar with who I am. Waste Management, so if you work for Waste Management, they're a pretty good company to work for. They really take care of their employees, they pay them well, and I think the gentleman you, that just retired could vouch for that. But raising our rates, it's the wrong thing to do. It's a, you know, you start off with, maybe the residents don't have to pay as much, but you start raising the rates on commercial, commercial businesses and you're gonna, you know, it's gonna hurt, it's gonna, it's, they're gonna pass the buck on to us and the residents are gonna have to pay more for services and it's just not right, no. Waste Management investing in the youth, that's good, we should see more of that. I mean, it would be nice to see like a whole row of students, you know, getting scholarships and stuff like that. I mean Starbucks, I don't know if you saw the news, but they're, you know, they're investing in their employees, part-time employees, and they're even paying some of the scholarships, you know? And in some cases, like full tuition, but Baldwin Park, man, I don't, they're part-time employees, nope, they don't get, they don't get paid like that. They don't get, they don't get benefits, they don't get scholarships, but hey, if you're in upper management, I recall one of my supervisors had his, the whole time he was there, he was, he was getting his school paid for. I don't know how much exactly, but, I mean, those records were never given to me like I requested, but, you know, and that brings up another issue of compliance and you guys, I don't know, you guys, like, I guess you think you're above the law or whatever, but even this Waste Management contract, I mean, I was here that day that I was voted on and all I saw was Waste Management employees here. I didn't see no residents voting for that, but anyways, you guys gotta do what's right. I mean, don't, you, you should be looking out for the residents of Baldwin Park, the people you're supposed to represent, not how much money can you squeeze out of them for the city to make money. It's just, it's not right, so, yeah, I hope you guys do the right thing here and vote, vote correctly.
All right, thank you very much, go on along.
John Reyes, resident. Mr. Wall, I send you those pictures with Mrs. Cruz, okay? I gave you a whole month. I called you a month ago. Just, just the beginning, okay? Anything that I see that's dirty or stuff like that, expect you guys to follow up on it. We get at least 1,000 people going through Kaiser every day. What do you see? Trash on Bass Street. And it's not that, that much, okay? I told you, get out, take a drive. You need to do that, okay? The other pickups that I add in those pictures, there's some in Ballpark Boulevard, some on Fraser, some in Los Angeles Street and stuff like that, in front of brand-new businesses on Ballpark Boulevard, we have a big truck full of trash. Looks bad for the city. I talked to a friend of mine, he's in real estate. Truthfully, he told me, all that stuff brings your property value around 30,000 to 40,000 dollars down. That's why I mentioned it to you guys, so you guys can go out and look at it, okay? I don't do it to be a pain you know where, but another thing, the residents of my neighborhood, just like Mr. Luna says, why are we paying for the million dollars that Waste Management gave us? Why are the residents gonna have to pay more? Those are the biggest concern. We should put it out to a vote like we did the police department. We should let the people talk, not you guys over here. Let's bring it out to the people. Let them decide. The one better service, there was another picture in there where Waste Management picked up one container and left the other trash right there. They couldn't get down, put, put it back into the container and take it all. And a guy from your department called up on Friday so they can call Waste Management. He was there almost 10 days, okay? Those are the little things that we see in the neighborhoods. Every morning, I come out, well, probably 6:30, 7 o'clock, I take a drive. I see something wrong, I'll call you guys, okay? One thing I do have to say is that the police department have been doing very good. We don't see those little hoods no more in our neighborhood. We don't see them in front of the high schools and stuff like that.
Mr. Reyes, your time's up.
Thank you, young lady.
All right, move along with public communication.
Good evening. Greg Tuttle, business owner. We all know from the old council why this contract came about. It was called lack of competitive bidding. And I hope our new council educates itself that you have to do competitive bidding because if they had done that, the other company that would have been in competition would have been doing our street sweeping for free. It would be doing our trash pickups for the same price we're paying now, commercial and residential. It would be bringing two trucks instead of three trucks in our city, lowering the emissions, which I want, I'll just say her last name, Garcia, mentioned about our contamination in the air. But nobody was concerned with that and they would also got the million-dollar token. Now, what we have now is we have the million dollars put onto the citizens and the businesses again because the council didn't do their due diligence of bringing in the right company and getting the citizen the best price. They kept partnering with somebody just because of the buddy deal. We don't need buddy deals anymore. We need cost-effective ways to save the citizens' money and the city money. And what happened here was nothing more than an elaborate buddy deal. And this million dollars is now gonna be paid to the citizens and businesses of this city and they're not happy with it and neither am I. Now, another project that I saw in the special meeting, a veterans housing over by the brick building over there with the red car. I don't know how many times you guys want to bring in junk that you're not making money on and that you want to just keep congesting the city. You already got Rome coming in here, low-income housing, then you're gonna have low-income housing on that side. Why don't you just put a fence around here and we'll just make it all low-income housing? I mean, I just don't understand this. You people need revenue, just like Mr. Luna said. You need revenue. That means commercial buildings, commercial people coming in here and selling stuff. You get sales tax, you get revenue, you get property tax. You don't get property tax with the low-income stuff and you don't get the right people in here. And what we're doing is, is bringing every low-income thing in the middle of this city. That's not what we want. Now, we kept convincing you that you needed to do superior. Finally, it came about. The shopping center's full. We're trying to tell you now, low-income housing is not the way to go. And the more you keep pushing it, the more the people are gonna push back. And this traffic study that was done, I'm sure it was flawed, just like the one over there by the school that they did for the medical building that they were gonna do over there. So I think maybe a study needs to be done on that before you guys make your final commitment because it's gonna be a big mistake when it comes in here and then you try to build housing over here. I don't know how it's gonna be done and what's gonna be given, but I says, we need to make revenue, not low-income housing. We got commercial, it's gotta get back in here. So remember your buddy deals, remember you need to do competitive bidding, you need to open it up for all businesses. What you guys did here cost the citizens and businesses a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. All right, move along with public communication. Good evening. Hello.
My name is Bertha Gomez and I'm a resident of Baldwin Park. And mine isn't. I'm concerned, I live on Forton Street and I'm concerned... Uh, I'm concerned, I live on Forton Street and I'm concerned about Olive Avenue, Olive Street. Every time I'm gonna come out to, on Forton Street to make a left on Olive, I'm always afraid there's gonna be a car that's gonna hit me. Cause you can't see, there's, there's cars parked and I really have to wait and wait and wait and see the last car that's coming. And sometimes I can't see it. There's times where cars honk at me, cause I get in, but it's not gonna be my fault. You know, it's, I, I don't know, maybe you could paint a red thing there or something. Cause there's cars, I mean, they're just parked. And if you wanna see one of these days, go to Forton Street and, and come out, make a left on Olive, and you can't see nothing. You know, cause there's cars parked, there might be maybe about six, eight cars, they're all in a row like that. And then you know you're looking and looking to see if there's a car coming, so you could get in and make a left. And you can't sometimes. And there's several times where I'm always gotten, gotten hit. So, um, I took a picture of it, I don't know if you could tell.
Yes, we could give it over to Mr. Wall.
I don't know if you could tell, because the, the...
Yeah, it is, that area.
Mr. Wall?
Thank you.
I was gonna speak to that as well, cause we're all sort of in agreement, but I'll tell you, I live on Olive Street, as she was mentioning, and I have the same exact problem. And so I just wanna see if we can look into that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and close the public communication. Yeah, and I just wanna say, and you are right, it, it's kinda tough. And I don't know whether half of that street's owned by the city of Irwindale or not, or the entire. I remember when we had some plumbing issues for the longest time and Irwindale had said that it's not our, residents don't live there, and they weren't gonna invest in that street. I mentioned it took years before they actually put the whole drainage. Is it still owned by, or is it owned by Irwindale, or is it half ours, half theirs? We could check in.
Part of it, I think.
Yeah, we could check in.
Mr. Wall, I'm just wondering.
Thanks a lot, Dan.
I think what's happening is that the cars are parked all the way to where the driveway is. If, I don't know if we can, um, just redo that street where we give a little bit of red, you know, curve area so we can look out? I have the same problem. I mean, you're guessing whether or not a car is coming, because they're parked all the way to the driveway where you pull out. If we had a little bit of a break with the red line or something, we can look out, but I also have that problem, so I really would like for you to look into that as well.
I'll take a look, first thing tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, at this point, unless council members have anything else, I'll go ahead and open up for the, uh, uh, we have the consent calendar.
Mayor, just have a...
Yes, council member Ricardo Pacheco.
I just, I wanna make sure that the, um, I noticed that the street sweeping schedule, uh, was, was inconsistent with the one that came out on the NOW. If we could send another mailing out to correct that, because I know we put it in our website, but a lot of people may not look on the website to correlate that.
We, we have adjusted it to make sure that we're following the one that was published in the NOW.
Oh, you did?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. And also, I know there was concern about bringing new businesses here to the city. Of course, it's always a long-term project that we're trying to do and work on, and a part of it is, we're doing a specific plan in the city to try to, uh, generate, uh, how to develop our downtown and how to come in with some of those ideas we're working on. But at the same time, uh, in the city, we have a few new restaurants, uh, the Flame Broiler, the Six Twenty-Six Hawaiian Barbecue, uh, the Ballin Park Grill, uh, America's Taco Shop, the Nuevo Italia, and Wendy's took the place of, uh, I think it was Burger King that was there before. So I just think that the economy's also transitioning. I think there, there's been a lot of, obviously a lot of businesses that have left, uh, Ballin Park, and now we're starting to, to see a lot of the new businesses. Kentucky Fried Chicken had an issue with the franchisee that they couldn't resolve, and so, so the franchisee left, and therefore we have the building, but, uh, hopefully we get somebody in there. I know it looks blighted right now at the moment, I agree with you on that, but we're trying to work with, with the owners to bring another, a restaurant in. And a part of the problem is that building is so old, there, there's a lot of expense into bringing it up to ADA standards. And so anybody that looks at it, looks at that cost and sometimes it just doesn't pencil out, but those are some of the things we're looking at. Also, uh, the historical society's having a fundraiser, so let's not forget to, uh, to go on that, so hopefully we can all make it to that, all right? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. This point, we'll go over to consent calendars, calendar, so council members wishing to pull any items? We have, um, actually just, uh...
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if this is the correct time, but I would like to pull, uh, nine and ten and have like a study session with our residents and our businesses.
Oh, here's what I'll do, well, let's go to consent calendar first and we'll go over there. So at this point, I'll move for consent calendar's items, one and three, that's my motion. Second, any objections, see now, so move. All right, this, then we'll go over there. We're gonna go to the public, uh, hearing. Legal counsel, did you wanna go ahead and do the announcement now?
Um, well, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to mention regarding the, uh, uh, the items that you just approved, one through three.
Yes.
On, there was a contract related to veneer construction and it, uh, puts a ten-thousand-dollar limit on what can be spent, and it's gotta come back to council and get amendments every ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, if you, if you wanna do it that way, that's fine, but if you wanna prevent that from having to come back every time, then you would want to amend that contract, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, thank you.
Number two? Yeah, on consent calendar?
May I mention, I kinda noticed that too, and I, but it's the same for all three, so they may wanna change it, otherwise they're, they're gonna keep coming back each time, so we might wanna change all the three contracts.
Do you wanna bring that back, or what do you want?
No, just, you just changed the number there, too.
No, you just have to change, so you don't have to come back every ten thousand.
That's fine.
Is there a number that you would like?
I mean, if you do like at every hundred thousand?
Well, let me ask you this, for example, can I, who, who handles these, um, these staff reports? I wanna know if there's time constraints on them, because if there is, and I'd like to see, before we start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, I would like to see it come to the council.
Then leave it as is, then.
Okay. It would save time, because you don't have to bring it back. Change, so, you know, so if you, if you, you know, you give it to the authority, to the public works director, to approve a hundred thousand dollars and then they, they do the contracts, that way it doesn't keep coming back to the city council.
I, I think that we should have a lower limit, I really do. A hundred thousand is, is a lot right now?
So you wanted to continue the way it is right now, so ten thousand?
Typically, well, what would you suggest?
The ten thousand is fine, for now.
To come back here, so for us to review?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
Then we'll leave it as is. All right, okay, so at this point, um, we're gonna go ahead and move on. So, so we're gonna go, we're, we finished that part area, and thank you, legal counsel. Now, we're gonna go into the public, um, hearing, which is a continued public hearing for fiscal year twenty fourteen, fifteen, budget and city council discussion. So at this point, who is going to be? Yes, thank Greg, go ahead.
At the council meeting the first of June, we opened a public hearing to stay in compliance with the municipal code. At that time, we had not done any, uh, budget study sessions. In the meantime, last week, we had two, uh, study sessions, so that gave the public a chance to at least have the presentation, so they could actually have a time to comment. So, um, recommendation tonight is to, uh, go ahead and continue the pub, open the public hearing, take public comments, and then at that point, stat, council can find further direction, and then we can, we have a study session scheduled for next Tuesday, dealing with the budget. And as far as, uh, next Tuesday, uh, all your requests, we should have out to you in the agenda packets tomorrow night, uh, in terms of formatting and some other, some other things. And, uh, I do have one really good piece of news. We, uh, got word in the last few days that we are receiving a little bit more increment in terms of our, uh, property tax dealing with redevelopment. So we will not have to transfer as much from the general fund over to the successor agency, so you have another forty-plus thousand in the general fund to, um, deal with one way or another or save. And so that number now, instead of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Uh, otherwise, we're incorporating, like I say, some of the suggestions you asked for, and you'll be seeing those tomorrow night when you get the agenda packets. And, um, on Tuesday, then we'll discuss that along with the part-time salary schedule that is needed to be adopted to deal with the new, the new minimum wage requirements, um, that start July first. And if you, and if you have questions tonight, uh, we're more than happy to answer them, or at least take them down, so that we can address them next Tuesday. If you have other questions that pop up in your mind between now and Tuesday, just feel free to email me or give me a call, and we'll work that into, into the presentation Tuesday. So Mayor, I would, uh, say, open the public hearing.
Uh, move, motion to close the public hearing?
Open it. Or continue it to open it?
Right, we're gonna, no, we're gonna close it, since we had, uh, we opened it the previous time and had input on that.
Well, I would give them a chance to make comments tonight, cause they did not have a chance to see the, the budget at, previously at the first one.
All right, okay, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the, well, it's still open, so anyone wishing to speak?
Right.
Uh, reference to the, the actual budgets, they'll come up near time, thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Mr. Luna again. On this financial report for, uh, twenty fourteen to do twenty fifteen, how much is this gonna cost us? Cause I know that it was mentioned earlier that we had to get somebody to help us straighten this out and produce it and show it up to the public and you folks. There has to be a cost somewhere, I'm pretty sure there is. And all your financial report in the, doesn't show what it's gonna cost. We citizens, as much as we ask, don't get answers sometimes when we ask. You need to tell us, this whole thing that's going on, that eventually you people will pass, how much it's gonna cost. All we see is a gentleman presenting it to us and to you folks, and we get to read it after you people all discuss this. And it doesn't tell us what it's gonna cost. Remember, months ago, you put, uh, a drawing up on the board there and you did the same thing. I don't know about the rest of the seventy-five thousand people, but this one thinks, I should know that when you tell me this financial report's gonna cost thirty-five thousand dollars, I'm gonna be complaining. I know you say, well, you complain about everything, but that's my right. So thirty-five thousand dollars for this, and then the guy says, well, we got more meetings to come to, that's gonna cost another thirty-five thousand. Pretty soon, we're paying out a lot of money. So where is the amount this gonna cost? If I remember right, we had to hire somebody to help us accomplish this feat written up on these two articles that you guys gave us.
Mr. Luna, you talking about the cost of doing the financial report?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to cost somebody something, I mean...
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Also, on this, uh, financial report, I think, like, uh, one gentleman said last week or a couple of weeks, uh, that it's done very nice. But wherever there is a, a huge difference in money, you should have put a little asterisk and say, refer to page such and such and such. Cause we people out here really don't know everything that's going on. We read it, but being that we don't start from the beginning, we don't catch on to some of the things that go on. So if you give us this little asterisk every once in a while, say, refer to such and such, we'll catch on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Ken Woods.
Good evening.
I was one of the few at the last budget meeting. And our risk management spokesperson explained our city's health insurance risk. It was unbelievable. I'm sure it was a surprise to every one of you as well. The citizens and the taxpayers of Ballin Park cannot afford to pay or to continue to pay this kind of coverage. The spokesperson told the council, there is an alternative. Change it. And I say, change it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, move along with the public, uh, hearing regarding the budget. Oh, here comes Thomas.
Okay. I had to get up, back hurts. Uh, I spoke about other things in the budget before. Another lady was talking about all the cars, perhaps a way to help with the budget is have permit parking to get rid of some of those cars. They wanna have those things, they gotta pay for them. Right? I know people are against things like that, but that would help with the budget too, and get the junkers and things off the street that are making it hard for people to see. I lived on Elton Street, and I never turned left on Olive for that reason. That's like turning left on Arrow Highway after they put that median up there. Don't go that way. Go over to Nubia and go out to, um, uh, what is it, Azusa Canyon Road? Don't turn left onto Olive or Arrow Highway, you're out of your mind.
Thomas, we gotta get back on the budget. All right, thank you.
There's just something that came up after, you know, I talked about the animals.
I hear you, I hear you.
So, I mean, if you had permit parking and things like that, uh, that would generate some revenue and that would also get the junkers off the, off the street and maybe get the cars in the garage and get the people out of there that are living in there. That way, there wouldn't be as many cars on the street. And at the same time, close to the corner should be painted red anyway. There should be some views, so at least you can see what's coming. But you have people parking big trucks and things, you can't see anything, so I know it's off-topping a little bit.
Gotta get back on the budget, all right?
Trying to, okay. But I, I know you're against permit parking and things like that, but something has to be done to get some control. I'll, I'll talk about more in detail next time. But, uh, the, the budget, you know, like I said before, hopefully allow some, uh, money in there to clean up that awful mess out on Los Angeles Street with all the graffiti on that public, well, it's not a public storage, but it's a storage facility of some kind. Maybe West Covina needs to step up and take care of that, since it's over there. I don't think that's Ballin Park there, is it? Maybe.
We gotta get back on the budget.
The storage place on Los Angeles Street, uh, where the railroad tracks go.
No, we gotta get back on the budget.
Oh! Oh, okay. I don't hear it so good. Are you saying you hear what you wanna hear? Okay. Well, um, okay, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Looking forward to seeing you next time. All right, buddy, take care, thank you. All right, thank you.
I worked a lot of years in budgets, and we go line by line, the difference of thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen. At the end, they would tell us exactly how much more it's gonna cost us by lying items. Okay? If there's no difference, we don't put it, an extra line. Okay? But we need to see the difference. I was looking at the budget, uh, Monday, and there's some areas right there where it jumps half a million dollars. We wanna see the difference. You know? I can bring you the papers, Mr. Gray. All right? That's a way to read budgets, so people can understand them. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, move along with the budget hearing. All right, see, no, for the interest, I, go ahead now, we'll declare the public hearing closed. All righty, so at this point, Greg, if you could answer those?
Yes, on the, um, financial report, it is just one component of the mandated audit services that Brown and Armstrong are gonna provide. The total cost is not to exceed seventy-five thousand, but that includes the full city audit, and includes the state controllers report, and it includes helping staff with the annual comprehensive financial report. So that's just one component of what is the full annual audit services. That cost is shared by both the financing authority and the housing authority, so the cost of the general fund is about sixty-four thousand dollars. But it really is more for the city's annual audit, and the CAFR or the financial report is just one component of that. And in terms of differences, one of the things you've asked for, um, is one of the, the items where we've changed in the budget that the council will see Thursday as we're showing the differences between fiscal year fourteen and fiscal year fifteen. As an extra column. And, and I would be more than happy to look at, at those areas you have a question with, cause probably most of them may be capital projects, but let's go over that, okay? because probably most of them may be capital projects, but let's go over that, okay?
All righty, okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. So at this point, council members, uh, not seeing any, for them, I'm gonna go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion.
There is no motion.
All right, so at this point, we're gonna go over to, um, number five, and that is the, uh, the point, the appointments of voting delegates for the two thousand fourteen League of California Cities.
Uh, Mayor, if I just may ask?
Go ahead.
So we, we did item number four, and are we gonna, uh, the direction to staff is what, to come back again?
Tuesday.
Yeah, we're, a study session continuing, yes.
Well, you can't, yeah. We have the study session next Tuesday.
Yeah, let's set the time at the end, let's set the time at the end, once we finish up.
Okay, let's bring it back up to set up a time.
Right, we'll set up the time at the end. All right, so at this point, we'll go over item number five, which is the appointment of voting delegates for the two thousand, twenty-fourteen League of California Cities Annual Conference Annual Business Meeting. Okay, council members?
Well, I, is anybody interested?
Yeah, I'd be interested in it. Is this the one in September?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, okay, but I, if there's two, I'll be the voting delegate, and I need two alternates.
Okay, I'll second that. Anybody else interested in being the alternate?
Is that in September?
Wanna go? Yeah, the, anyone wanna be the alternate? What, what, the, so that's for the, um, voting delegate for two thousand, League of California Cities Annual Conference? That's, what, September what?
I think it's on Labor Day weekend.
Early, early September. Oh, Labor Day weekend.
Yeah, I know I can.
I'll take it, I'll take it, do you want?
Wanna go?
You can go ahead.
Yeah, so you need to, my school year.
Show up, okay. Yeah, okay, go ahead, I'll, I'll, it'll be council member, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, and I'll be the alternate. But Ricardo, please be there. All right. Yeah, I don't wanna be, I gotta show up on that one. Oh, that's fine, that, I'll, I'll go, all righty. Okay, so that's the motion, any objections? Seeno, so move. Item number six, resolution number two thousand fourteen dash twenty-eighteen, approving the engineer's report for the city, citywide park maintenance assessment district for FY twenty-fourteen fifteen, declaring the intent to levy and collect assessments and setting a time and place for public hearing. All right, so what do we need on that one? Mr. Wall, you gonna talk on that?
Uh, yes. Every year, an engineer's report is prepared in order to determine what the cost are going to be for the citywide park maintenance assessment district, to ensure that we're not levying more money than needs to be levied in order to, uh, in, in order to fund this district. It was found that we have a one-point-zero-four percent projected increase in expenditures, and so we are asking the council for a one-point-zero-four percent increase in the levies against properties in order to finance this park maintenance district. There is still a deficit, and the, uh, the general fund makes up the difference in this deficit. The current deficit is one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars in the district. This is an improvement over four years ago. Four years ago, the annual deficit was two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars per year. And so through, um, through cost-saving measures, we've been able to decrease that deficit. And, um, so, like I said, we're asking for a one-point-zero-four percent increase based on our actual expenditures in this district.
And this is the item that comes back every year, correct? And we have to prove it?
This, this, yes, this comes back every year, and the next item, which is the lighting landscape maintenance district.
Are both that automatically come back every year? Okay, thank you.
All righty, so at this point, we'll go over to item number, so we need a motion on that? Okay, at this point, I'll move for, for approval. Any objections? Seeno, so move. All right, we'll go up to item number seven, which is resolution number twenty-fourteen twenty zero one nine, approving the engineer's report for the citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment district for fiscal year fourteen fifteen, declaring the intent to levy and collect assessment and setting a time and place for a public hearing. All right, so this, Mr. Wall.
So, this, the, the rates that we're proposing on this have not changed in the last fifteen years, and we're not proposing to change this year, we're at our statutory limit on this. And so, again, our costs have gone up, however, we're, we are at the limit of what we can levy on this fund. We do have a fund balance in this fund, and so we're not running into deficit, there is no impact to the general fund, uh, this is a self-sustaining fund at this point in time.
All right, so at this point, council members have any questions? If not, at this point, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Uh, any objections? It was, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, Councilmember Cruz Baca, no objections, all righty. Item number eight, which is a resolution number twenty-fourteen dash zero two, two zero, authorizing the submit of an application to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Cal Home Program. So who's had this?
Uh, I agree with this, honor the mayor, members of the council, the state has issued a notice of funding available, and we plan to apply for those monies. We want to apply for about one million dollars to provide assistance to the residents for mortgage assistance, as well as homeowner rehabilitation assistance also. We, we should be able to provide about sixteen homes at about sixty, sixty thousand dollar plus for each home in rehabilitation. So the state requires a resolution to, to submit the application, and the deadline is July tenth.
All right, council members have any questions?
I, I do.
Yes, oh, Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Uh, thank you. Does that mean for home improvements?
Yes.
For sixteen homes will be available?
Approximately, if we look at about a million dollars, you know, sixteen homes should be fit, but some people may ask for less money, and we, we may be able to provide assistance to additional home if we have less over monies.
Okay, when would the funds be available, or is there an application process?
The funding, the funding is available right now, we need to submit an application to request the money, and the deadline, the state deadline to request the money is July tenth.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, what are the income restrictions on, on those?
You know, I don't know exactly what the, the final interest rate would be yet, but they're usually like one-two percent.
Okay, and then families, is there like an income level, like, have you got four or five in your family, there's certain income levels, is that?
They have to qualify for the middle income, the, uh, low income.
All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and move for a motion for approval. Any objections? Seeno, so move. All right, we'll go down to items nine and ten, I did hear, we wanna pull these for a further study at a second meeting.
I would like to request, if we could possibly have, I guess, that, Mr. Wall or, or Mr. Casanola, um, so that we could do a study session and include the businesses and the residents, along with, of course, the council? Is that possible?
We could have a study session posted, and people could attend, you know, so.
Yes, so that we can discuss further, there's too much controversy about this right now. I do understand that prior to my being up here, it, there is a contract that was voted, but I would like to see if we could have some type of a study session.
Okay, uh, do you have any dates you'd like to propose for that?
Wow, I guess probably like mid-July.
Mid-July, okay. So, yeah, uh, prior, uh, before the July sixteenth meeting?
Yes, if, if possible, thank you.
Okay.
I'm thinking Fourth of July, people will be gone anyway, so that's why I'm saying mid-July.
Okay.
Uh, ma, yes, council, Vice Mayor. Would there be any type of, um, input be the financial impact, because we do have a contract, and I don't know, if you do it past July one, what, what are the consequences?
We do have a contract that states that rates, this rate change will be effective July first, so my guess is that the billing would be retroactive to July first, um, once, once the increase is adopted by the city council.
Okay, so if we hold it off into mid-July, then, in July and August, they would see the, the retro part, and then?
That, uh, because our contract calls for it to be effective July first, um, that would, that would be how, that would be how I would handle it if I were Waste Management, so.
What, okay, i- is it automatic? I mean, if we already agreed on this agreement, why are we having to vote on it?
It is, it, it requires a resolution by the city council, since it is a fee. However, uh, this increase was already approved in the contract, and there was a Prop two-eighteen hearing that was held that approved this increase, um, five years ago. This is the last rate increase that's approved under that original Prop two-eighteen hearing.
All right. Um, okay, then I'd like to have Waste Management also show the rate of other surrounding cities and compare our, our, our costs, so everybody can get a cost comparison.
And also from other companies, not just other cities.
Well, I mean, others, other cities have contracts.
Correct.
With, with different contracts.
If we're going to do, if we're gonna show comparisons, then we also need to see other companies' rates, because others, not everyone's with Waste Management.
That, that's true, other cities may have Athens, other cities may have whatever they have.
Republic, yes.
But, but we, you know, whatever selected cities, however we do it, there's, are certain cities that we look at that we make comparisons with, so you can see that. And that was, when we originally voted on this, you may have not been here, but.
No, I wasn't a council member.
That's how we made our, our determination was based on rates of other cities.
I, no, I, I understand, I just wanted to leave, uh, some type of a study session or discussion so that the residents and the businesses understand.
Um, Councilmember Baca?
Yes, go ahead.
Since there is this July first date, and I know I spoke to you earlier, and I failed to identify that for you, and I apologize, uh, but since there is this July first date, um, and it is, and it is contractual, then, um, there is a possibility that if you don't take action tonight, that we could possibly be in breach of that contract. And, um, if, I'm sure that we can work that out with Waste Management, but maybe if you would entertain having the study session on July second, so that it's only, so it's a closer proximity in time, you know, so you're not waiting well beyond the July one date, that might be, uh, something you might wanna consider.
Hmm, well, I, I guess I don't have many alternatives.
Yeah, really, I, I guess what I really should tell you is that, um, if you don't take action today, then we will be in breach of this contract with Waste Management. And I know that this contract was approved and signed when you were not on the city council, so you didn't have anything to do with it. But it was approved, it is in a contract, and if you don't take action today, it could put the city in breach, and I would not recommend that. Uh, I should have mentioned that to you earlier, and I apologize.
Well, I would like to see what the rest of the council thinks, otherwise I don't wanna make this decision based ju- just on what I've, uh, the complaints or the concerns from some of the businesses in the city, and the residents, and myself, so, I, do we have any input about anything?
No, no, I hear your concerns, and I definitely, you know, I'm mindful of the residents and what they're saying. Unfortunately, in this matter, it's a legal matter, and as the, our legal counsel stated, if we don't approve it, we're in breach of contract, and so at this point, we cannot put the city in a position to be liable for, for a breach of contracts.
And I think that's right, Councilmember Baca, is that there really are no options for the city at this point, given the approval previously to this contract, which calls for a rate increase on July one, effective July one, two thousand fourteen. So there really are, even though I understand your concerns, and these concerns are valid, because of the action that was taken by the council previous to you, your hands are tied.
Okay, then, but just, real quick, I just wanna make clear to the residents, we heard you, and we hear your concerns, and, you know, we apologize, there's nothing we can do at this time, or else we would put the city in a position to, again, to be in breach of contract. Thank you.
All right, okay, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and move for the motion on this one, Mike Gray.
This, this is, this is item, item ten is the one that has the rate effective, um, July first. So just, just, just to make that clear, what you're voting on.
Ready? That's correct, item ten is the only one that has the rate increase.
But we're dealing right now with item nine, though, right, Craig?
I, I, but the, the reason why this conversation occurred was because I believe both items nine and ten had been pulled for discussion.
Okay, all right. Okay, so at this point, okay, so are we gonna move on nine and ten, are we pulling them out, or what is it we're gonna, who, council wants to do?
Well.
I mean, we'll be in breach of contract.
We'll be in breach of contract, my hands are tied.
Okay, so at this point, do, okay, does someone wanna make a motion?
A motion to approve nine and ten, is that?
Okay, yeah, any obje, uh, at this point, is there a second? Okay, if there's not a second, the motion drops with lack of a second. Okay, do we need to vote again?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, okay.
There is a motion, I think, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I guess we're waiting on a second.
Yes, exactly, so let me go ahead. So at this point, council members, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, council, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco has made a motion for items nine and ten, is there a second?
Mayor, as he stated, we don't have a choice based on the previous action taken, we don't have a choice, so we need to move forward with it, or else, again, we'll be in breach of contract, so if you're not willing to make it, Mayor, then I'm gonna have to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, so is that a second? Okay, all right, there's a second by, by Councilmember Suzurio, at this point, any objections? Yeah, there's an objection? All right, so at this point, Madam City Clerk, got roll call, there's an objection. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead.
Councilmember Ricardo, uh, Mayor Patán Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz Baca?
No.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Yes, okay, so the motion passes, uh, three, uh, four, four-one. All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go to item number, um, none, actually. We still have the other committees as well, so let's move for a German of the city council, I mean, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the, um, we have a couple of comments on the other one, um, the finance authority. Let me open up the finance authority, and, uh, we have, uh, just the treasures report, the calendar items one, is that, that is my motion. We have the housing.
Housing.
Yeah. Is there a second?
A second.
A second, any objections? Seeno, so move. This one, I move for a German, uh, the finance committee? How, finance, okay, uh, second, any objections? Seeno, so move. All right, at this point, I fill up, who's got the, the housing? Do not have the housing on here? I had it, and then I moved it, okay, all right. Okay, so here we go, at this point, electo, oh, six?
One, two, it's six, five.
Uh, Mayor, what I also like to ask is if there's like ten or fifteen minutes, that we could help for residents that have questions and want it answered with the, you know, so that the finance director can answer.
Yeah.
Some of the questions that they have. I, I think they want some dialogue, and maybe give them ten, fifteen minutes just to ask questions.
Can anyone do it any early, that day now?
Six, like five, or what?
You guys do five? It's five o'clock with, okay, with everyone or not?
Five.
Five, I could make five.
How about three? How about three o'clock now?
We should, but I can't.
Oh, you can, okay.
Five o'clock?
And also, Mayor, on top of that, can we have a little discussion about the rate comparisons of, of other cities with, with Baldwin Park on the waste management issue?
Yeah, okay.
No, that day on Tuesday.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll do five o'clock then on Wednesday, I mean, Tuesday of next week.
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Yes, okay. Hopefully, we'll be done, Craig.